Hello and welcome to today's video. My name is Annael, I'm a certified yoga teacher and breathwork instructor. In today's class, we're going to detoxify the body. I'm going to guide you through a dynamic flow of yoga poses, followed by breathwork techniques and a short meditation. I hope you enjoy it. Start by taking a comfortable seated position. Here I'm sitting on a pillow, you can use a blanket, whatever you have on hands, but make it comfy. Ground your pelvis into the pillow, the mat, whatever is beneath you. Lengthen the spine, which up with the crown of your head. Broaden the shoulders. And when you're ready, close your eyes, relax your hands on your knees. And take a moment here to relax completely the belly. Inhaling through belly, chest and throat. Exhaling completely. Keep your awareness with your breath for now. If you can relax your face, forehead, your eyes, your cheeks, your jaw. Bring a hand on your heart, a hand on your belly. And feel free to take an intention for your practice today. When you're ready, relax your hands. And with your eyes either closed or open, start by warming up your neck by bringing your head back. Chin up. Inhale. And slowly work circle with your head. Exhaling, bringing the chin to the chest. Very gentle, inhaling head back. Go slowly. As if you wanted to stretch every single muscle of your neck. And then go to the other direction. Very gentle. And bring your head back to center. And inhale, bring your arms up to the ceiling. Fill up your lungs. Exhale, release your arms by your side. Again, inhale, bring your arms up, lengthen the spine. Exhale, release. Inhale, arms up. Reach a little bit further. And exhale, release. On the next inhale, roll your hands up. And exhale, lower your hands to your right side, twist to your right, very gently. Inhale, roll your hands up. And exhale, twist to the left side, bring your hands to the left. Inhale, roll your hands up. And exhale to the right. Inhale, arms up. And gently on the exhale, bring your hands and your upper body to the left side. Inhale, bring your hands up to the ceiling. And exhale, release your arm by your side. We're now going to move to a North Four position. Bring your knees and hands onto the mat. Knees or hips distance apart, hands or shoulders distance apart. And be sure to spread all your fingers onto the mat. Your thumb pointing towards each other. Middle finger pointing to the front of the mat. And press the floor away with your hands on your knees. Lengthen the spine here, reaching forward with the crown of the head. Reaching to the back with the pelvis. Relax the belly. And from here, gently bring the pelvis onto your heels, lower the forehead onto the mat. Keep your hands engaged. And release the lower back. On the next inhale, reach forward with your hands and then bring them to the right. Stretching the left side of the body. Relax your head. Inhale, bring your hands to center. And exhale, bring your hands to the left side. Breathing into the right side of your body. And inhale, hands to center. Anchor the hands into the mat. Slowly lift your chest. Tuck your toes in. And on the exhale, leave the knees of the mat and send the pelvis back and up. Press the ground away with your hands. Find an external rotation of the arms at the shoulders. Lengthen the spine. And once you've found the length into your back, then you can work on lengthening the legs. Bring the heels towards the mat. Keep breathing here. And on the next inhale, bring the left hand on the outer part of the right ankle. And gently twist, looking towards your right side. Inhale, bring the left hand back onto the mat. And on the next breath, bring the right hand on the outer part of the left ankle. Looking towards your left side. Inhale, both hands at the front of the mat. Look forward. Exhale, bring the feet behind the hands. Inhale, bring the hands on the knees, lift the chest halfway up. And exhale, keep a bend on the knees first. Relax the chest, the head down. And bring the pelvis slightly forward and up. Release your head. On the next inhale, engage the glutes. And raise your chest and your arms up into standing, arms towards the sky. Exhale, bring your hands together at the chest. And then release your arms by your side. Feet are hips distance apart. Spread all toes on the ground and distribute equally the weight onto the four corners of the feet. Bring the pelvis towards the mat, lengthen the spine. Open the collarbone, release your arms. Close your eyes for a few breaths. Noticing how your body is adjusting to the standing position, finding its balance. And on the next inhale, bring your feet together. Reach the mat with the tip of the fingers, bending the knees, sending the pelvis back. And then raise your arms above your head. Stay here for a few breaths. Strong legs, pressing the ground away with your feet. Stay connected to your breath. Lengthen the spine on each inhale. One more breath, that's strong. On the next exhale, bring your hands to the mat. And step your left leg back. Bring the left knee onto the mat. And take enough weight between your two feet. The right knee is aligned with the right ankle. Lengthen the spine here, bringing the left thigh forward. And breathe. Allow your muscle to lengthen in this posture. You can either stay a few, take a few more breaths here. Or on the next inhale, you can also raise your chest and your arms up. Be sure to keep the right knee above the right ankle. Sending the right thigh back and the left thigh forward. And breathe. On the next exhale, bring your hands to the mat. The right foot is outside of the right hand, so you can bring it a little bit further to the right side. And here you are very welcome to place a block or a blanket or some box to raise your chest a little bit. Keep lengthening the spine here, pressing the floor away with your hands. And again, you're welcome to stay here for a few more breaths. Or you can on the next inhale, lengthen the spine. And on the exhale, reach up with your right hand coming into a twist. Lift with your right hand, as if you wanted to lift your wall chest. Putting as little weight as possible on the left hand. And exhale, bring both hands onto the mat. Tuck the left toes in, send the right leg back. And bring the knees off the mat, sending the pelvis back and up into a downward facing dog. Take three deep breaths here, relax completely the head. And on the next inhale, look forward. And bring the left foot in between your hands, lower the right knee to the mat. And tuck your right toes. Take a few breaths here. Finding the stretch into your right thigh, right psoas. And two options here, you can either stay here or you can inhale with your arms and your chest up. As you inhale, open your chest towards the ceiling, towards the sky. And as you exhale, sink into the pose a little bit further. Exhale, bring the hands to the mat on the inner side of your left foot, so you can move the left foot a little bit to the left. Again, you can raise your hands here. And as you inhale, reach forward with the crown of the head. Make space in the body. You can breathe here a little bit further. Or on the next exhale, you can twist to the left, lifting the left hand to the ceiling. Bring your gaze wherever it's comfortable, either to the mat, in alignment with your spine, or to the left hand. And exhale, both hands onto the mat. Send the left knee and foot back. Tuck the toes in and bring the pelvis back and up into a downward facing dog. Three full breaths here. And you always have the option to also come into a child pose. Or whichever pose feels good to you. One more breath. If you're in child pose, inhale, lift the chest a little bit. And exhale, tuck the toes in, transition into a downward facing dog. And we can all now inhale, gazing forward. And exhale, bring the feet behind the hands. Feet together, bend the knees, send the pelvis back. Engage the glutes. And inhale, raise your arms up. Breathe deeply here. Stay focused. One more breath. Inhale, arms up. Exhale, release your arms by your side. And take a few breaths here, closing your eyes if it feels right to you. And then coming into a seated position, step one leg back, bring the knee to the mat. Step the second leg back. Sit on your heels and then you can come sitting, sitting onto the mat. Two options here, first you can always raise your sitting with a pillow, a blanket, a block, whatever you have on hand, just make it comfortable in a way that you can lengthen the spine. And then you can either lengthen the left leg or fold it as you prefer. And bring the right foot on the outer part of the left thigh. So if you choose to fold your left leg, it will look like this. Just make sure that both sitting bones are touching the surface underneath you. And first inhale, lengthen the spine and bring the right knee towards your chest. You can help by pressing the right foot into the mat. And you can either stay here or inhaling, lengthening the spine and exhaling, twisting to the right side. Then work with the breath here. Inhale, create space. Fill up the body with air. Reach up with your chest. And on the exhale, allow the belly to empty. And find maybe a little more space to twist to the right side. A few more breaths here. And on the next inhale, come back to center. Release the right leg and either stretch the right leg or fold it. And bring the left foot on the outer part of the right thigh. Inhale, bring the knees to, the knee to your chest, the left knee towards your chest. Anchor the left foot into the mat. And reach upward with the crown of your head. And if you choose to come into the twist, inhale, lengthen the chest and exhale, twist to the left side. And again here, work with your breath. Creating more space on each inhale. And getting a little further into the pose on each exhale. Connected to your breath. And take one last breath here. Make the most of it. Inhale, slowly come back to center. Release the left leg. And bring both feet together. Find an external rotation of the thigh at the hips. With the intention of bringing the knees towards the mat. And start by taking a few movements up and downs with your knees. Starting to release the hips. Inhale, lengthen the spine. And exhale, bring the chest forward and release the head down. Release your face. Allow your breathing to be slow and steady. For a second, try to close your eyes and see how it feels for you. And the next inhale, gently raise your chest up. And come into a comfortable seated position. I'll bring a pillow here, but choose whatever you have on hands. And make it very comfy for yourself. In a way that your spine is able to be erected. We're going to practice two different breathing techniques today. The first one is Kapal Bhati Pranayama, which is a purifying breathing technique. And it will increase the blood flow and purify all systems of the body. For this technique, the exhale is forced, so we are going to use the lower abdominal muscles to expel the air out. And the inhale is automatic, so you only need to focus on the exhale. Please bring your knees lower than your hips to allow the right muscles to to be working in this breathing technique. And feel free to take your own rhythm, you don't have to keep the same rhythm as I do. So go slower if you need to, or go faster if you prefer it that way. Whatever works for you, just practice it with a way that is gentle to yourself and that is sustainable, so it doesn't have to be as strong as possible, it just needs to be actually kind of easy. Yeah, and it will look like this, we are going to inhale, exhale completely. Inhale and on the exhale, force the air out. And we are going to practice two series of Kapal Bhati. One of 20 and one of 25. You are welcome to stop at any time and to catch up on the next series or not, or just take some calm breath instead if it feels like too much. And after that breathing technique, we are going to do another one that is very calming and soothing and will help to relax for the end of the class. So again, find your comfortable seated position. Lengthen the spine, which up with the crown of your head. Broaden the collarbone and relax your hands onto your legs. Close your eyes. And take a moment to reconnect to your breath. Relax the belly, relax the face. You can bring your intention for today's practice again into your mind. And prepare for the first breathing technique, Kapal Bhati Pranayama. Exhale completely. Inhale. And let's go. Five more. Exhale completely. And inhale, relax your breathing now. Keep your eyes closed. Observe any sensation in your body. Keep your awareness within. If it feels alright, prepare for the second series. 25 breaths. Exhale completely. Inhale. And exhale. Five last. Exhale completely. And release your breathing. Welcome any feeling, any sensation with an open mind. Let go of any control of the breath now. And for the second breathing technique, we are gonna bring a small contraction at the back of the throat. This technique is called Ujjai Pranayama. And keep this contraction as you inhale and exhale through the nose. At the beginning, you can have it quite strong, so you can feel it. And then when you feel that it's easier to have this contraction, you can work on making it more gentle. And try to lengthen the breath now. Maybe you can inhale on the count of six. And slowly exhale up to 12. Whatever number works for you. Whatever number works for you. Just work, work on making it a little bit longer. A little bit softer, whichever breath. And maybe you can add a few seconds of pause between the inhale and the exhale. Again, not forcing anything. Just allowing the breath to pause before emptying the lungs completely. Taking a few more breaths here. Make the most of this last breath. To the next exhale, let go completely of the breath. Keep your awareness within. Notice all temptation, feelings. Anything that your body is telling you right now. No judgment. Stay completely immersed in the present moment. And stay here as long as you want. Just make pause on the video and take the time that you need. And when you are ready, bring one hand on your chest, one hand on your belly. Take a moment to create a state of peacefulness. A state of gratitude. Of love. All these qualities that you'd like to feel more of. Generate it for yourself. Abundance. Path yourself into it. And realize that all these qualities lies within you. At any time, you can connect and exhale them. Bring your hands together in front of the chest. Namaste.